Call a meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Here.
Gary?
Here.
McMullen? Reed?
Here.
Merebe Da.
Here. Changes to the agenda. Item two is not an, is a discussion item, sort of an action item. So we won't be officially approving that tonight. And then we will not need closed session. So we're going to take five and six off of the agenda. Any other changes?
That's all.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the meeting for public comment. If you have comment for counsel, please come to the podium. You have three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we will move to our action items. Item one, ordinance 2024-31, annexing territory commonly known as 1517 East First Street to the city of Strater, LaSalle and Livingston Counties, Illinois. Can I get a motion and second?
Two.
Second.
Okay, Tim with the motion and Dave Reed with the second. Any discussion? None? This was, was another sewer annexation?
Yeah, so, oh, sorry, yes. So a year and a half ago, they entered into a pre-annexation agreement so they could get sewer service. Then they were across the street, the petition for street annexation came in, and now they touch the city. So this is the final action. They will bring that house into the city.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen? Reed?
Aye.
Merebe Da.
Aye. Item two will go into budget review.
Reed?
Yeah.
Well, he also serves as a financial consultant with Olivera. And he is the individual who took the departmental request modified and put it into the budget document that you have tonight. He also worked with him on tax levy options. And so we'll be discussing both this document as well as tax levy options. And depending on the timing and your energy levels, if you continue our discussions, I have some remarks. The approach that I would recommend that I take in prior years here and in the other communities I've served is to kind of look at the budget process like a wide follow. I asked that the departments, you know, you open with the council as to their departmental needs. So there may be requests for equipment or other projects or other needs that will be made that at the end of the day, we're not going to be able to follow. But you should know what those needs are directly from the departments. And as opposed to just be making me that I cut it, that I prepare a balanced budget review, you know, on first read. So this is the first vote for a not a balanced budget because it's not intended to be. But we'll talk about what we need to cut and to make it in a line that needs to, you know, meet the needs of the city. So with that, we'll go department by department. And starting with the general fund. We have listed, how did we do it in prior years? What's the first?
Just whoever wanted to start.
Because like in the case of the police, when they're done, they can leave. Or Gary, Jeremy's departments cross different funds, so his is a little bit more complicated in that regard. So now, hmm?
Gary.
Yeah, well, fires, in some, in most of this, as you'll readily determine, will be naturally complicated because the personal costs are the personal costs. We did experience, what was the budget, an increase for health insurance was originally over twenty?
Ten percent is what's in the budgets.
Ten percent. May end up being more than that, but our broker is working to keep it increased down, but it's a pretty significant hit. And then the head count is what is at current staffing levels. And most of our employees are union employees, so it's whatever the contract provides. So. So we're going to be jumping around the document depending on department, you know, page numbers so you can find your place.
Page eight.
So I'm just going to hit a couple of the highlights of line items unless you have a question about a certain one, obviously feel free to ask. So I'm going to start with 2608, which is uniforms. Asking for $25,000 for next year. That's for buyer stationware and also their turnout gear, including helmets and boots. Turnout gear nowadays is going for $6,000 apiece for pants, coat, boots, helmets and gloves. Currently short two employees, so I'm trying to have enough money to get turnout gear for those. And we're also looking at one or two retirements probably in our department next year. Then I'm going to go to 2626, which is EMS supplies. Now, this is the supplies that are carried on the fire trucks, so it's separate from the main windows of supplies. And so $8,000 there.
Reed?
2626.
BBT changes? What's the matter? Good.
So looking for $8,000 there. That's what I had in last year's budget, and we did okay with that. 2651 is our software maintenance. So that, looking for $18,000 there, which is the same as last year. That pays for our recording software, our pre-planned software. We have a training suite built, the software, so that pays for all of those. 2665 telecommunication. So we're looking for $30,000 there. That pays for the fire cell phones, which there's three of those. It pays for our radio time on the Starcom, radio frequency. It pays for the phone line from the north tower antenna, which is up behind the moose. There's a piston tower up there that comes back through the computer. So it pays for that phone line. And it pays for our phones in the stations. 2667 machinery repair. So $8,000 there. We have contracts with companies, and this pays the contract fees. It pays for the maintenance on the storm sirens, the generator at the fire station, and our breathing air compressor. 2668 vehicle repairs. $25,000, which is what I asked for last year. That covers the seven fire vehicles and the two boats. And that covers our pump and ladder testing, which is required every year to be done for those certifications. 2671 is training. Asking for $35,000. So probably going to have to put, looks like we may have to put three guys through the fire academy next year. So that'll pay for that. Also with promotions going on, there's training that is required for them to get once they're promoted, if they don't have the training already. So it pays for that. And we also host one or two classes at the training center, so that assists in paying for that. 2680 is building. So I'm asking for $100,000 there. Our front ramp is the original concrete that was put in there 18 years ago. Our parking lot hasn't been resurfaced at that time at that, I believe, either. So both are starting to get in pretty bad shape. We actually patched the potholes on the ramps with, Public Works does it with asphalt for us, so we don't break any angles out there. So I'd like to try to at least replace part of that next year. 2685. So last January, we made our last payment on Engine Three, which is our newest fire pumper. We were paying $87,000 a year on that seven-year loan. We spec'd out a truck, very similar to Engine Three, which is a no-frills pumper. So in the eight years, that truck has increased to a million dollars, over $525,000. This is what we paid for it seven years ago. So I'm asking that the city can set aside $120,000 for a payment towards a new pumper. And then it would be my hope that I can come back in January and ask for a pumper to be purchased. So the caveat with ordering trucks, fire trucks nowadays, is they're four years away. So if we were to order it in January, it would be four years before we would ever see it. With the incentives and everything that we do, it's called the Houston Galveston Consortium, which they do the prepay for us, which gives us a big discount as well. And our first payment would not be due until one year after we sign the contract for the truck. So the payment, first payment wouldn't be due until '26. And it's like at the cost of the truck, that those payments are going to be around $120,000 for ten years to pay for the truck. Just a little side note, our Engine One is 36 years old. We still use it, we still pump with it. Parts are getting harder to find for it, and we have had to buy parts off eBay before to get it fixed. But we're still keeping it running. Engine Two is 24 years old now. Typical lifespan for a pumper is about 15 years, so because of our good maintenance program and that, we can make them last longer than normal, but it's getting some age on it as well. So that's all I had for the fire budget, unless you guys have some questions. Okay, so we'll move on to EMS, which is on page?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. So account number 25626 is EMS supplies for the ambulances. This is the disposal stuff that we use on calls. We do bill to try to regroup some of that expenses. And I raised it by $10,000 for next year to $75,000 for a total. Because supplies have gone up. I am looking at the first of the year to review the cost of our supplies compared to what we're charging for them. And we'll probably raise those fees for those items as well. 25651, software maintenance. This is the reporting software for the ambulance calls. 25655.5 is with the contract with our EMS billing company. We had $90,000 in there last year and this year. We're staying well into that, but I went ahead and left it at $90,000 for next year as well. 25655, I'm sorry, let me back up. 25657.5 contracted services. $1,358, that's our contract with AMR, with the personnel to operate the ambulances. And that's by contract as well. 25665 telecommunications. That pays for their radio time on Starcom. Cover that. $6,000 there for the year. 25668 is vehicle repairs. $15,000, so that's for the three ambulances. They're required to go through the safety lane three, sorry, two times a year each. So every six months, we have to run them through the safety lane, as required by the state, and any other maintenance assigned. And just a side note, I'm probably going to have to put tires on the two newest ones sometime next year. 25683, machine equipment. $25,000. That's just for new technology that comes out or something that our EMS system requires us to purchase and use for patient care. So in the event something like that occurs, that's what that money's there for. And 25685 is for vehicle. I'm asking that the city can set aside $50,000 toward the purchase of an ambulance. I will not ask for an ambulance until '26 at the earliest. However, ambulances are running $325,000, and they are three years out. So if we disordered today, it'd be three years before we see it. So we need to plan on those, plan ahead on those purchases because of the delay in the manufacturing of those items. So that's all I had to represent EMS. Do you have any questions I could have answered?
Thank you. If you can figure it out by now. 22 is the phone number. The second two digits are the department code and then the ID code. So when you were saying 20 dash 20, 625, for example, that was fire department, then the ID. Police department?
Page 23.
Just a simple alert to Gary. If you have any questions on any of our line items, just let us know. But over this budget year, starting off in 2230, 651, due to subscriptions. We're asking to add $90,000 to that. Reason for it is last year Joe Navarro purchased iCrimefighter for many agencies in this town. It's a digital software sharing system that we use for the state's attorney's office. Screen lines are a digital data transfers tool. We're no longer sending over DVDs or anything like that. It's all gone over the cloud, as well as reports. Makes the process a lot easier to share information, get reports over to them quicker than we had been supposed to every other day. They're doing as soon as we can clear reports. With that, it's $9,000 per year cost. State attorney's office purchased the first year for us, however, we're expecting to pay after that. 2230, 620.01, weapons and holsters. This year, we were granted a Warden and Elias grant to less leave the program to replace our tasers. The initial purchase, price of the tasers is a little over $15,000, which is being picked up by Elias. However, there is yearly payments for the equipment for the actual taser cartridges and things like that afterwards, which is a total of $7,821 per year. As I found out going through our budget, we've never budgeted for taser cartridges in the past. Our old cartridges are, right now, running $43 per cartridge. They're one-use. So when we trained with them, we were probably going through $3,500 worth of cartridges. Since we've never budgeted for them, we're always pulling them out in different areas for a budget. So I'm just looking to increase our budget from 2500 to $11,000 on that line item. And that will cover that, and makes it a lot easier for us to figure out where the taser cartridges are coming from. 2230, 620.02, ammunition. We're asking to increase our ammo budget from $5,000 per year to $6,000. This just covers raising increased costs of ammo. There's no sign it can go down anytime soon or probably ever. It's getting harder and harder to get ammo still. Nine millimeters is not bad, but we're still waiting for months at the time. And another problem we run into is with this new academy we sent in recruits to, we're sending 1,200 rounds of ammo with them to the academy. So we're quickly going through any surplus ammo that we have. So we sent three through the academy this year. We're sending another one in January. So we're looking to increase our budget by $1,000 on that.
2230, dash 685.00, vehicles. During fiscal year 2025, the department will purchase one squad car for departmental use. As vehicles are delivered, we anticipate transferring one of our used squads to become a new CSO vehicle for Kathy Spitznagle's Explorer. It accumulated quite a bit of number of miles. So it's accommodating the time, but we need to get rid of it. The total requested is $60,000 for a piece of car. 2230, dash 683.00, machinery and equipment. Addition of our four new Flock cameras. The initial cost to purchase and install Flock cameras is $15,900 for fiscal year '26. An additional $12,000 per year will need to be budgeted to cover yearly fees. Current Flock subscription is paid from the 2230, 670 fund. New total, excuse me, the total for fiscal year '25 is $17,500. Still waiting final accurate estimate on Flock. We talked about this earlier at our staff meeting with the mayor, with the city manager. We have to add four additional cameras to keep up with what's going on around the street and our surroundings.
And that's it from our original budget. Our secondary budget is to the drug fund. That's going to be $91.00.
Connor's page 96.
See, we're at 655.02, police dog. Last year, we purchased the second K-9. We increased our budget at that time. It was understood that our budget would increase from $4,000 to $8,000 in fiscal year '24 to cover that piece and everything. Fiscal year '25, we're just asking for a 8.5% additional increase, again to go with inflation. Asking to go from $8,000 to $8,400. If there's anything else, any other questions on any of our budget line items? Got the answer.
Police dog, police dog. You requesting $8,400?
Correct.
Yeah. We showed them after we approved $30,000.
That was the purchase, that was also included, the purchase of the dog and?
So they $8,400, then?
Yes. Any other questions? Mr. Gary wants to read. Mayor?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Page 27.
Animal control, there's not a whole lot of changes here from last year. I requested less money for equipment or anything for next year because I don't foresee anything major. Only that's gone up is gas, because we never know what's going to happen with that. We're going to have a whole lot of changes until we get down to some possible discussion. I have the 633.02, that's the prepared rehab park shelters.
Page 29.
That'll be the middle page.
That's $100,000 estimate for the new large shelter that Merle parked. We wanted to do this last year, but things got pushed back.
It seems awfully expensive for a shelter, $100,000. Or am I just naive, aren't I?
Was that two? We budgeted 50 last year and then?
Okay, two shelters to build only.
What's that?
How many shelters are you budgeting for? Is that one shelter or two?
I think it was the one big one. That was the number that we had to have. If I remember correctly, we had to, we had an estimate from, from a kit.
That was four, I think, or at least something.
Yeah, I think this is for two.
Oh, was it two?
Yeah.
Because we budgeted 50 last year and then didn't build it. And we had Chamblin do a design so we could get it, go out to bid.
Yeah, we have the one with the pad that's been poured in, and the one that was taken down on the other side of the road. And in a different part of the budget, there's shelters around the hundred grand.
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
There is, I don't know if anybody's looking at it, but I don't know if it ever got changed, but 634.01, traffic control and safety equipment. That budget, the amount that we spent this year, I don't know, it still shows $38,000 or 14 in there. That, part of that was from when the traffic control cabinet at Hickory and Park Street got hit. That was the billing to fix that. There should be insurance reimbursement for that, $36,000 total.
Just a random question.
Yep.
Public comfort stations.
Yes.
Can we put like stainless toilets in the city park bathroom?
We could, we would at that one time, what was?
I don't know how much they are, but I saw another one.
Very expensive, I didn't remember.
Yeah, another one was broken, so I don't know. How many can you repair for, for one?
Probably more than you want to think about. I don't, they're what, almost $2,000?
A piece, yeah.
Yeah.
Something, something to look into.
Yeah.
I just, I know kids, old people go in there and they destroy them, and I think it'd be a little harder to, I don't think you could break one in half. Might be able to bend it, but no.
If they hold them in prisons, I would think they'd be a little bit.
I don't want to.
In a park bathroom.
Yeah.
On the shelters, is this the same kind of shelters that were purchased this year or is it something different? Or between Cypresswood and all that stuff?
Well, if you're getting ready to go off for bids, if the budget is approved, these are the ones that are submerged through the high school.
No.
The high school is over.
Remember, they, they.
These are from ones, this is a Chamblin design, similar in shape but not Cypresswood.
So we got to get plans in order to go off for bids, so we're getting ready. Right next year.
Will we be able to see the plans before it comes to us?
I can make you copies tonight.
Just to see what they look like and stuff?
Yep.
We can move down, I think, to 666.00. Building repair and maintenance at City Hall. That is $148,000, that is for the replacement of the generator. That is not functioning, what, two years, three years?
Has it been that long?
Two, I think.
Yeah.
And then the new generator besides the handle of the entire building.
666.02 HVAC maintenance. Requested a little bit more there this year at the building. The HVAC system in the building is getting to the point, it's old enough now, we start to need to start doing a little bit more maintenance. I know that there's bearings and things in the fans that might need to be replaced, and we kind of just need it gone through a little bit more often. 666.04, building repair and maintenance for the incubator. I had $10,000 in there, and that's just a continuing. I had ten thousand in there and that's just contingent for possible roof repairs on the flat roof. We've had some leaking issues, some of it was solved by cleaning the drains out this last year, but that roof's getting, getting pretty old, it's a rubber roof and we can have a problem with it at any time. Six seventy-four oh two, tree replacement. We didn't wind up doing any this year, we kind of ran out of time. But next year, I plan to have all of the missing, overgrown and broken trees on Main Street replaced. As well as replacing probably at least ten trees in the city park as there's, I think, eight or nine trees that are, that need to come down this winter.
Will that include the two trees at the dog park that were removed? We're gonna replace those?
We could, I guess. Move down to six seventy-four oh four. Had twenty thousand in there, that is for possible contracting out of installation of playground equipment. Whether it be for Mayor Park and or for the playground that is being, the Logan's Oasis that the fundraiser's going on for. Six seventy-four ten, splash pad maintenance. Had a lot of issues here this last year with some of the things which is probably put a little bit extra in the budget for this coming year. I'd like to get somebody from the manufacturer or another professional who deals with splash parks to kind of go through the entire system and tell us what we need to repair or replace and a little training on how to. Retraining on how to run the thing. Here, here's a big one. Six eighty-three, engineering equipment. As you all know, our public works equipment is deplorable at best, it's getting a little bit better. One of the things that we use a lot is the mowing, mowing, we mow approximately a hundred acres a week during the summer. Takes a long time and it takes its toll on the equipment and most of these, most of the four-wheel drive mowers that we have that are required for mowing the hills and everything, especially out of Marilla Park. I think the newest one probably has over thirty-five hundred hours on it. The rest of them have four thousand, five thousand hours. They're getting up there. The next one in that list was replacement of our three-ten Gondier backhoe. I looked at pricing for a four-ten backhoe new with the attachments on it that, that we would want. Runs at almost around two hundred thousand dollars. I'm looking towards a wheeled excavator in lieu of an actual backhoe. It would be a tool that can save a lot of time, we can do more work and do a lot of the work that we do a lot safer. There's a lot of ways that we do things and frankly, it'd be kind of scary sometimes, so. There's, I also got in there another trailer for lawn mowers, trying to do away with the tilt deck trailers that we have that are dangerous to operate. Especially with summer help kids loading mowers off, on and off of them. Six eighty-five. Our heavy duty pickup trucks down there, there's two, well, we have bought the three-fifty here this last year. And I'd like to get another F-two-fifty for hauling around, some of the heavy, the heavier mower trailer. And another F-one-fifty or, or possibly a Ford Ranger, Jeremy and I had talked about that. Which would actually would be the city engineer's vehicle and who would send his vehicle down to the mowing crew. Which would make more sense because it's a crew cab truck and it's one of the problems we have is a lot of single cab trucks and it makes very inefficient to move people around. Six eighty-nine oh four, city parking lot improvements. We didn't do those this year, but I'd still like to get a city hall parking lot patched and sealed and re-stripped next year. I think if we don't get on it soon, it's gonna start falling apart and get worse than it is.
Out of your budgets, does that, does that cover seal coating on all city park use or just?
It could be any, any one of the city parking lots. That's, this is the worst one right now.
When's the last time you seal coated any of them?
Never have. That's why I did.
You'd like to do them all?
That's why Anderson was done last year, yeah.
Any, he's gonna do them all.
Any idea how much, how many lots you could do for ten thousand?
Two?
I have.
Yeah, it depends, I have to get, I have to get a bill, I mean, city hall parking lot's a little bit unique because it's odd shaped and.
Yeah.
Traffic and whatnot. Anything else is a lot easier to do, you should do half at a time.
I know the lot next to the library, just to the north that the city owns, the stripes go different directions, it, it needs to be covered and re-striped, but. I don't know if this would cover that.
Sure, we can do whatever we want, I was just trying to do one a year, not take such a hit.
Well, ten thousand isn't that much, I mean, when you're looking at other expenditures of two-hundred-and-fifty, ten is, you know, something we can squeeze in somewhere.
To put it in perspective, I think the Anderson Field Parking Lot last year was seventy-five hundred dollars.
What would the cost for new parking lot?
Two hundred thousand dollars.
So it'd be worth it for us to still call all of them instead of, because if we put them off for two or three years down the road, it's gonna get worse and we may have time to replace it. I'd rather get them all done and be safe and sorry, be safe now.
Six eighty-nine point one five, park projects. Another big one. One anticipated to fill earlier this year. Got a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, that is the coded price that I got for replacement of the poles and lights that are infected that the basements, it's outside.
Any questions about any of that?
No. All right. Yeah, but maintenance. Six twenty-two, gas and oil, like all, all the gas for all departments, I had to bump it up because I have no idea what's gonna happen with fuel. I'd like to project, I almost hit it this year, but likewise. There's not a whole lot of changes for this department. The only one thing I did take out was all the line items for fire, police and Anderson, I took those out of, out of my budget. I, that was an attempt for me last year to keep track of what time and money we were spending, you know, in that department for those departments, but we just decided to leave it in their, their own department. Thank you. Do we need to stop and stretch or is everyone dead? Keep going.
As Dave said, I won't get into the spaghetti you told me earlier. So twenty-two twelve.
So page thirty-six.
So twenty-two twelve is the community development department, so code enforcement, so it's code enforcement. So the salaries there pay for your one full-time building inspector and then your part-time code enforcement officers, so that's down through salary. Gas and oil, as everybody talked about, projecting an increase there because gas and oil's going up, so thirty-five hundred dollars in six twenty-two. Next major line is six fifty-two oh one, which is fifty thousand dollars, so that's our annual demolition, we usually put fifty thousand dollars in. This year, so with a hundred and twenty-three, we got a grant of seventy-three thousand. That grant has not been released, sometimes it skips a year, so it has development authority. If they come out with it, we will apply, but as of right now, they haven't opened up applications for next year, so fifty thousand dollars there for demolition. Down, the other large item in here is six fifty-seven fifty, twelve thousand, that is the code enforcement side of B S N A mainly. So for the permitting software and code enforcement software, and then if we have to do any outside plan reviews, that comes out of there as well. And then thirty-two hundred dollars for inspector cell phones. Last thing, the last line is six eighty-nine twelve, fifteen thousand. The last several years, council's been putting fifteen thousand in there for one facade grant in the downtown area and not in the TIF. So at one point it was obligated to the State Farm building, Chad Lucas's place, so that is outside the TIF area but in the downtown, so we put it in there, we have nothing. Don't have current application, but it's there, it's a plug in in case something comes in. Any questions on that one? Next is twenty-two sixty-five.
Page thirty-eight.
Twenty-two sixty-five is the engineering, community development engineering fund, so salary and wages, you're looking at them, so right there, so that's the pays, this is. This is in the general fund, but when we get back to fund fifty, the half cents are the full cent sales tax. This bottom line number of three forty-one oh two six, you're gonna see that number come out of the sales tax into the general fund that paid for this, all those, all these accountings. And Steve says that's the way to do it, so that's why it's done. So there you go, software maintenance, four thousand dollars on six fifty-one, that we have to update our GIS system, get the county maps, the Lewis and Lassalle County maps, so there's four thousand there. Biggest thing outside of wages there is six fifty-five, other consulting of a hundred and forty thousand. In fiscal year twenty-two, Mr. Long left to run public works, so we've been using an outside consulting firm and that's what that pays for. So a technician comes in, they help me out during with construction and surveying and all those things, so a hundred and forty thousand pays that consulting fee. Telecommunication, six sixty-sixty-five is a thousand dollars for cellphone. And then the others, nothing, there's a small items there for missileings. Questions there? Now we're into TIF, fund twenty-seven.
Page fifty-one.
So yeah, we had four TIF funds we'll go through, the first one, fund twenty-seven is downtown TIF, so TIF two. The very first thing there you'll see is the revenue, so revenue of, it's gone up a little bit in taxes being assessed by the county, so next year showing a six hundred thousand dollar herb revenue into that TIF fund, into that downtown TIF. Then as you come down, large items, six seventy-three oh nine, reimbursement to the, to the governing bodies, so that's to the school district and the other governing bodies based on the agreements. So we get six hundred thousand in, two hundred thousand then go out to the other taxing bodies by the agreements we have. And then these small three thousand, two thousand, three thousand, those are reimbursements for TIF projects that have already occurred, such as the work at the Bartoli Chiropractic, Ilcarvo's, First National Bank, Bridge Street. And then you've got four nineties maintenance of a lot of property, so current agreements in the downtown TIF, that's for small amounts from two thousand to three thousand dollars, if they submit requests. So they have work that required. Now we're down to six, six seventy-five ninety-one of a hundred and five thousand, that is the payment for a TIF bond, that's the twenty-seventeen TIF bond issue that funded a multitude of projects. Some of it went up there to North Point, which we'll talk about in a minute, some of it was also for downtown Vaker and things like that, so. Hundred and five thousand in principal and then twenty-four thousand dollars in interest, that continues for several years, so you'll see that year over year. Six seventy-eight twenty-seven, you gotta pay the lawyers, that's ten thousand dollars there, that goes to Economic Development Group, Herb Klein and Glenn Crawford, their group. Now the most, probably the most exciting one, six eighty-nine twelve, downtown improvement, that's a facade program. So showing a hundred fifty thousand dollars request for next year, that includes a hundred and five thousand in payments for grants already approved but not yet complete, but will be complete next year. And then three additional grants for next year that the Plank Commission City Council became out. So you'll have three out of TIF, you've got that one, so four is what we're showing for next year for award. But like in, in past years, as the year goes on and you can look at this TIF fund and maybe do some more, but as presented four. So, and so now we'll get into the other tips, but the transfers are the last thing, so TIF two is contiguous with TIF three and TIF four, so there's money that can be transferred between. So nine ninety-nine twenty-eight is a transfer out to TIF three, the North Point TIF, to make some payments, so you'll see that. And then nine ninety-nine twenty-nine is a transfer out to TIF four, and we'll talk about that once we get there, but any questions on the downtown TIF? Next is twenty-eight. So this is the North Point TIF, so just like you saw the revenue there, North Point TIF brings in fifty thousand dollars in taxes roughly for a year. And then there's a six, so next, in revenue is five ninety-nine twenty-two, a transfer in from the general fund of sixty thousand. The city established a business development district around North Point and the movie theater several years ago, so that is those proceeds. So you transferred the money in so we could pay those bonds, the North Point bonds, but that's a sixty thousand dollar revenue there. And then just as we just saw, you had the transfer in from TIF two that we talked about, a second ago, a hundred twenty thousand. So that's your revenue stream for the North Point TIF. The payments in that TIF at this point are only to pay the bonds that were issued, the two-point-three million dollar bonds issued several years ago for all that work that was done for it. So there was a two-point-three million dollar bond issue, I think in twenty eighteen or twenty sixteen, somewhere in there, so we pay a hundred sixty thousand dollars principal and fifty-four thousand dollars in interest. And then again the lawyers, but that fund, basically revenue came in, revenue out is zero, so that, that's what that one is. North Point. Talking too fast, words on that, I hear. All right, fund twenty-nine.
Fifty-six.
So that is the South Industrial TIF, the, I found it in the Vaker TIF, so revenue again, four hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred, so you've got that revenue coming in from that. Now then, the, the Vaker expansion from several years is now fully realized in taxes, so that, that's that. And then transfer in from TIF two of two thirty-six four fifty, that we saw back on, on that other one. So again, reimbursement for the intergovernment agreement of ninety thousand to the taxing bodies, six seventy-three twenty-six, hundred and fifty thousand. bodies, six seventy-three twenty-six, one hundred and fifty thousand. So this is the first, in the years following the build-out of Vactor, I think they started in twenty-twenty, we had made several payments, and they got the cash out of a bond that was sold. Last year, we didn't make any payments, so we were kind of square with them. And now, this comes straight from our TIF attorney, Glenn Crawford and Herb Klein. There's now, due to remaining life of the TIF of about sixteen years, or however many years left in that TIF, we now are going to be making reimbursements to Vactor by that agreement. So we didn't make one last year because we've given them the cash, remaining cash in the previous year, and now we're up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we'll start to see in that year over year about that amount, and that's by a previous agreement. And then the TIF bond, the principal, again, we sold that two-point-three million, two-point-five million dollar bond for Vactor, so ninety thousand dollar principal and eighty-eight five fifty for interest. Six seventy-eight twenty-seven, we keep paying the attorneys again, ten thousand to administer that. And so, and then here, so the last thing is ninety-nine sixty, a transfer of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars out to the grant fund, and we'll talk about that, that's to make up local matches, so we'll talk about the grants, the services once we get back to the grant fund, but that's the local match for a couple of grants, so you'll see that number again shortly. All right. Our last TIF, thirty.
Page fifty-eight.
This is the Villas, Villas Hollywood. So this one is a standalone TIF and is not contiguous to any other TIF. So this is basically, they pay their taxes, and by the agreement, basically they go back out minus legal fees. So that was the agreement that we did with Villas when they were built, so two hundred and twenty-five thousand is the Villa property taxes, and actually that might start going up because I do believe that the Dollar General is in there. They built a new Dollar General, so that, you'll start to see those taxes go up, but again, they go back to the development. So two twenty-five, but just so you can kind of keep an eye on it year to year. Same thing, fifty thousand dollars is to the taxing bodies, and then one fifty-five, one hundred and fifty-five thousand to the E homes of Hollybrook, and then twenty thousand dollars legal fees, and you'll see that one zeros out too. So in and out. And now thirty-one, sewer operating.
Page sixty-one.
Over to thirty-one. So this is the sewer operating fund, so this is where you, number four twenty, line nine and four twenty is utility billing, so two million six hundred and one thousand dollars in utility billing there for revenue. Late fees of forty-five thousand, that's kind of where it runs year to year. Utility connection fees, so new homes or anything that, there's a ten thousand dollar number there in case anybody paid that fee. Renting township is number four twenty-three, so there are payments to the city every year of a three hundred and five thousand. So that's the revenue. That's the revenue side of the sewer operating fund. Salary wages, all those things, that is a myriad of people, just part of the city manager, we have a building clerk, part of the work director, that's, anybody that has a relationship to the sewer operating fund, a portion is paid in there for their wages. All the way down through insurance and all those things. All right, you start getting into expenses, down at six twenty-one, that's where it starts, so you can kind of orient yourself on the page. That's for chemicals, which is a degreaser and root killer for the sewer lines, which Jeff's going to be doing some of that next year. So jumping down, next one, the six twenty-seven, off supplies and postage, that's mailing of sewer bills. So twenty-four thousand, Julie up that one. We're starting to see increase in postage, so like everything else, we had twenty thousand dollars this year, the budget is going to twenty-four, handle the increase in postage. Vehicle maintenance and materials, forty-five hundred dollars, that's for the small, or parts for the Vactor and the camera van and other sewer-related equipment, but that's parts that we're going to put on in-house. Six fifty-one software maintenance, that's BSA utilities billing software, that's the component of that fee we pay every year. Legal, six three oh one, we pay ten thousand dollars for the retainer, the city attorney there. Six fifty-seven fifty, twelve thousand dollars, gone, we did it up a little bit just because we're going to come in a little higher this year, but that's for small-scale sewer work if we have a small issue that we have to contract out. A small project that doesn't require bidding, it comes there if we have a sewer clash or something like that, a minor, something we just want to deal with. Six fifty-nine, treatment plant operating contracts, so that's your payments to Veolia, as well as sludge hauling and utilities come out of there as well. So we approved that agreement with Veolia this year, so it kind of locked in our prices so we can get a better handle on it, but we budgeted one million thirty-five thousand this year. We're going to come in at about one million sixty, so not too bad there, but then we're showing a three percent increase, I believe, from the one million sixty up to one point one million. So just trying to keep it. Rising costs, so one point one million to Veolia and sludge hauling and electricity at the sewer plant. Six sixty-seven, machinery repair and maintenance, one hundred and twenty-five thousand. This is for equipment that goes bad, that we need to, pumps, mixers, equipment at the sewer plant and lift stations that need immediate replacement. Veolia will put together a maintenance request and detail the reasons why, and then Dave and I review them, and that's where that comes out. So that's large-scale pumps, mixers, one hundred and twenty-five thousand. Six sixty-eight is repairs and maintenance, that's mainly repairs and maintenance of the Vactors, fifteen thousand we send out. If the Vactor goes away, that's where it's paid for. If we get to ship it out to Federal Signal for repairs. Six sixty-nine, other repairs and maintenance, that's ten thousand, that's, those are repairs to sewer equipment not related to the Vactor, so the back, you can put back no cost in there sometimes and things like that, but that's what that's for. Six sixty-nine oh one, ten thousand again is for repairs at the lift station. If we have some mechanical workers up there that needs a lift station, that's where that comes from, pay our Julie. Six seventy-three twenty-two, by state rules and the county principles, we put forty thousand dollars back to the general fund for overhead related to the Vactor. The city hall operates the sewer system, there's a forty thousand dollar payment to the general fund from the sewer fund. Six seventy-three twenty-three, fifteen thousand, we have to pay the water company if we request that they shut off water for unpaid sewer bills, so there's that fifteen thousand dollar payment there. Next two big numbers, six seventy-five oh nine and six seventy-six oh seven are principal and interest on previous loans from I E P A for sewer projects. So I list them there, it's work going all the way from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty, so city's taken out multiple loans over the years to complete projects, and these are the loan payments for those. Six seventy-eight oh two and B D S, every year we have to pay the state and feds to operate our sewer plant, so there's the permit fee for that, twenty-five thousand. Nine ninety-nine ninety-nine point two-two, transfer out to general fund, again, that's another transfer by accounting principles to the general fund of revenues. So we, first one was for overhead, this is for five percent of revenues, one fifty-eight two fifty. And then the last thing out of here is, we have our program set up, nine ninety-nine thirty-two is a transfer to the sewer construction fund, which will be next, to pay for our sewer projects. Any questions on sewer operating? Next is sewer construction.
Page sixty-five.
Number thirty-two. So starting again with revenue, line four eleven, those are the grants for next year, and all things we discussed before, but that number's made up of three hundred and fifteen thousand for the Vermillion Monroe Sewer Lining Project, three, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in remaining funds that we requested from the feds. We requested our first payment from the feds today, so next year, two hundred and fifty thousand, and then the oxidation debt of a million dollars for next year. So those, that make up that revenue of one million five sixty-five. You just saw the one million dollars transferred, next line down, transfer in from sewer operating, and then I don't have it, but it's on there for transfers from sewer depreciation. So there's a transfer of, this is, we discussed it, to pay for what we did, are currently in the process of doing the sewer plant, for transferring five hundred thousand dollars out of the sewer depreciation next year to fully fund that project. So that's, that's your revenue for sewer construction fund. And now the payments come down, six eighty-six oh eight, sewer construction, that is Leroy Milner, seven hundred thousand dollars to complete that work next year. That work's already underway, it's been down at Vermillion Street, but we'll finish up next year. Six eighty-six oh nine, San Terence Sewer Construction of four seventy-five, that'll be the completion, and actually supposed to start tomorrow, but Vermillion Monroe Sewer Lining of that old Brick Arts, Brick Arts Sewer, of three ninety-five. And then, this is one we talked about, and we approved the I dot permit earlier this year, and then it was, weren't able to get it done this year, but on Main Street, out on the east side of town, past Casey's, basically from Center Street to the east, there's several homes there that aren't on sewer because the sewer lies on the south side of the road, and we're going to bring it to the north side, as well as putting in, oddly enough, the sewer runs on the south side down to Trinity, and then, pardon, sorry, down to Fuller, and then it jogs to the north side, and runs all the way out to Airport Road to those homes. So Central Church of Christ is not on sewer, and so this eighty thousand will pay, not only to bring in those about eight homes on the north side by Center Street, they'll also bring in Central Church, so they'll start paying a sewer bill.
Between Center and Fuller?
Between Center and Fuller, the house on the north side will come in, and then Central Church, we're going to do both of them.
Central's on the south side.
The sewer's on the south side until you get to Fuller, then it jogs to the north, and then, so then, so Central Church is on.
It goes east.
Then it goes east out to Airport Road.
Right. Any way we can hook the people up on Hickory that are right on the other side?
It's set up for it, that's, it'll be set up to do that, but it's just, it's just been a matter of running the sewer up there to them. So all the things we do in that neck of the woods are designed to be extended. But that's a small-scale sewer project, just eighty thousand dollars, just as I said, it's just for those few homes, but they've requested sewer, a couple of them are in the city, so this'll complete that work. And there you go. Oh, I missed a revenue, so back up, that eighty thousand dollars is actually going to come out of the, the petty sales tax, Fund Fifty, so I missed that eighty thousand, so those numbers, there's revenue coming into fund, so that's where that's coming from. And that's sewer construction.
Is this my place, has that been all hooked up?
Yes, they're all on sewer and all happy, as far as I know. So.
Page sixty-nine.
And this is, so Fund Thirty-four is the Kent Street Sewer Project from fifteen, twelve years ago, so this is, we're just paying off the bonds that were issued to pay for that project, so as part of those bonds, basically Fund Fifty was created, which we'll get to in a minute, the sales tax fund, so the money comes in, out of the sales tax fund of five hundred and six thousand, and then the payment is made. So that's, that's just there as a book.
How many more years?
Twenty thirty-four. We got a few more to go. Getting closer. So now, next is fifty, an on-home rule sales tax.
Seventy-six.
One percent sales tax. Everybody on that one? So revenue, three forty-three oh one, it's been creeping up, which is a sign of inflation or more spending in street here, but that fund, the sales tax has gone up, it's one million five hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Seventy. I'm getting there. The papers are all stuck together, I can't get them.
So yeah, so the first line, three forty-three oh one, is the revenue from that one percent sales tax of one million five ninety-five. The only other revenue that goes in there is line four fifteen ten, which is five thousand dollars that comes in. We get ten cents a ton on everything shipped out of the trans loading facility off of Smith Douglas Road, out there at Prairie Transportation. So by agreement with them, it's a road impact agreement, ten cents of a ton of every commodity, that's the five thousand dollars there. So we've been putting five thousand, but it's been a little slow the last couple of years, but we're, the more they ship, the better off. So now we go into what that funds, line six eighty-nine is, so is the city street improvement, so five hundred and fifty thousand, we talked about the five-year-old plan. So the only addition from what we discussed before is the traffic signal box right by the Baptist Church over here at Park and.
Bridge.
Park and Bridge. We require that triangle so we can move that, it keeps getting hit, just like Jeff talked about the one on Hickory, we'll move it into that triangle and replace that F Street push button, it's been missing out for a year. But that's thirty thousand dollars to complete that work. And then, at the request of the police chief, there is twenty thousand dollars in here, so I want to make sure you hear me, for radar speed signs, South Park and South Bloomington at the creek, and at the dip, and then also Centennial School. So we put in those, speed, just like we did the high school, the speed radar signs there, that's the twenty thousand dollars to pay for those.
For those, we did ask the high school to pay for half of them?
And they did, so we have reached out, but we will reach out.
Yeah, I want to make sure we asked.
Yeah, ask the question.
Yes.
So next, six eighty-nine oh nine, city facility improvements. So we had budgeted three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars this year to put up a building shell at Needler. We bid that project out, and unfortunately, three hundred and twenty-five was not enough. So that project did move forward, we're working with some builders of steel buildings to hopefully bring the cost as we bid it down, but we're putting five hundred thousand dollars, there's a cash or a fund balance reserve in there, which funds that, that's why you're going to see a negative number at the end of this. But the half million dollars would put up the shell of the building next year and delay it, I think that may be one of the things Dave talks about when he gets to that point, but as presented, there's half million dollars there to put up that shell at Needler. And then we get out to the transfers, so nine ninety-nine twenty-two, that's the transfer to the general fund, I talked about, by salary as well as the engineering, so that's the three hundred and fifty thousand. Nine ninety-nine thirty-two, transfer out to sewer construction, that's the eighty thousand for the work on East Main we just talked about, and then transfer to Fund Thirty-four, five hundred and six, to pay for that Kent Street work. And that's it. That's just it for that one, we got a couple more.
Yeah, I know.
All right, everybody good on that? Fund fifty-one.
Seventy-nine.
Eight seventy-nine. So the city levy is a public benefit tax every year, I'm not sure what the percentage is, but it basically brings in fifteen thousand dollars, so that's the revenue side, so public benefit, and then we use it for reimbursement for city residents that want to put in their own sidewalks. So fifteen thousand dollars in, fifteen thousand dollars out. Questions on that one? Fund sixty.
Eighty-one.
This is our grant fund. So, okay, so for next year, the first line of four eleven is the grant funds, that one million nine hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and fifty is comprised of nine hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in E D A grant funds for the incubator, if we can knock on wood, finally get E D A off center on that, the project going, so nine forty-eight, the first D C O housing grant that we received should be, with the last payment to be made next year of two hundred thousand, so that'll complete the work on the ten homes we did with that first grant. And then we were lucky enough to get the second grant, which we should start seeing payments next year, for ten more additional homes, so six hundred and fifty thousand in that. And then the last one is the Merrill Park Project, we've already received one hundred and nine nine fifty, that is half of the grant that we received for that work out there, so we've already have, we received from grant revenue this year, we'll have the last in next year to complete that project. And just a side note, I was supposed to just talk to the contractor, and he's thinking, probably like the week before Thanksgiving, he's going to get here, get mobilized, the gabion baskets will be delivered, that's why he's going to get here and hopefully get set up. So near the, end of November, into the Christmas season, we'll at least get started, I'm sure he'll break and come back, but he's going to try to get started. Revenue, five ninety-nine twenty-nine, that's a transfer in from TIF Four we talked about, so that's going to pay some of our matched components as we get further down. And then, six eighty-nine oh nine, our revenue, our expenses, city facilities, one million one hundred and eighty-five thousand, that is the incubator. So, and that's actually with that grant, that two thirty-six four fifty, that's the match for that grant from E D A. So if you take the nine forty-eight plus that, you'll get one million one hundred and eighty-five thousand. Six eighty-nine fifteen, park projects is the balance of the Merrill Park Project we just talked about, of one hundred and nineteen, so if we make payments. So if we make payments this year, uh, if he starts, and then we'll make the final payments next year. And that's it. And the last one for me, anyway. Uh, Fund seventy-one.
Uh, eighty-seven.
Uh, which is MFT. Uh, so, uh, first one, the city rep four hundred and seventy-five, we're, uh, uh, requesting and projecting five hundred and forty thousand, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars next year, so a small increase, gas prices are going up, so MFT follows. Uh, this year, and this is just, so if anybody can see why, we only, uh, put in two hundred and seventy-six thousand. MFT is now comprised of two things, uh, it's just a straight MFT, but in twenty nineteen, uh, they passed a, uh, MFT tax, or MFT Tax Replacement Act. It's part of the infrastructure bill that was passed, and so we're getting additional monies, uh, from, into the MFT accounts, so. And I failed, I, we, we received them in twenty twenty-two and I just, I missed putting them into the revenues for this year, but they are there. So, but that's why two seventy-six, but if you look at the twenty twenty-two number, we were getting them the three, the years before as well. So just if anybody sees what I have, but five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in MFT, uh, for next year in revenues, and then we get into expenses. Uh, six thirty is road patch, that's oil and rock for Public Works, so ninety-five thousand dollars, uh, there. And then, uh, uh, I'm sorry, seventy-three thousand dollars for oil and rock. Six thirty-one is salt, so ninety-five thousand dollars in salt that we get from the state purchase agreement. Uh, and then six eighty-nine is the city street improvement, which next year will be comprised of our small-scale, uh, uh, road project of the overlay of Chabana, uh, basically from north of Owens up to Forest Street. Uh, that's, uh, thirteen through seven hundred blocks of two hundred and thirty-five thousand. And then, uh, the Iowa Avenue project, which is on schedule for next year, of a half a million dollars of our portion after the, uh, federal, federal grant. And the, the reason you didn't see that job anywhere is that is a federally funded project to the state, so the state pays all the bills, they'll send us an invoice, and we'll just pay the bill out of here. So, uh, the state pays all the bills for the Iowa Avenue job, just like Twelve Street was. And then Keller Street Bridge, uh, so this is, we talked about it, passed the ordinance the last meeting, but the two hundred and eighty thousand comprised of two hundred thousand dollars in payments to, uh, for the work and eighty thousand to the county for administering the engineering. So that comprised of the one million one hundred, or one million fifteen thousand. Any questions? Where?
Well, uh, solid ways, we've, uh, actually got this funding. I just received today from Paul's Waste Management, our, our contract is up this spring. And so that budget might need to be adjusted from what is being presented tonight. It's, it's frankly, even if the rates didn't change, or the charges from Waste Management didn't change, we would have to adjust rates up in order to balance. Though we're not anticipating any service level charges at this point. Anderson Fields is, just like the admin, being a focused, well, compared to here, is what we're budgeting to do. We have, it's a facility that, uh, is managed and operated by retired street residents. And, uh, they, I think, do an excellent job, uh, it's a beautiful facility. We haven't really put much money into the facility, uh, over the years, recent years, but, uh, there may be a need at some point to have to replace, uh, mowers and, uh,
Carpet.
Carpet and the golf carts, but this budget does not anticipate having to do so. Uh, we did run into a mower problem a year, two years ago, and, uh, we just went and bought a public works mower at a lower price. So it's not a mower designed for golf courses, but we're making it perfect. And, uh, for the fairways at least. So let's jump to revenues.
On the solid waste, on the Waste Management contract?
Yes.
Is their contract done?
Yes.
So are we bidding it out to?
Well, that's, that's, that's especially needed to have. I think the first step is to take a look at what we're paying Waste Management, what Waste Management is proposing to charge us compared to what other communities are currently paying. Let's just see where we are, where we fit in, in the marketplace. If Waste Management poses, for example, is comparable to other communities, then they need to bid out, probably, as rate as if they're trying to see something, something that is well above them.
But they don't pay it up, they don't, they're assuming they're cheap.
Well, yeah, but you also run into service quality issues. LaSalle ran into an issue a couple of years ago where they changed from, uh, public. Uh, we're not getting complaints, right, we're getting good service out of Waste Management today. Uh, they're very attentive to our customers when there's missed pickups. A lot of things, the missed pickups are due to the fact that residents get, get their cans out of the bank. But, uh, we also have, uh, a program that we're funding that allows for hazardous material, electronic, um, equipment pickup. So we, we have a pretty, pretty program that we're, pretty beneficial program that we're offering. It's expensive, but it's, I think, beneficial to citizens. I'm not here prepared tonight with any recommendations as to that contract. I, I think it's time now to just see where we fit in the marketplace, how well our costs are compared to other communities like us. And, uh, and then decide what we're gonna do if we can't go off the bid again, but, uh...
I think last time, so the last time we did bid it was May of twenty eighteen, and we had two bids, Waste Management Republic. And I think one of the bigger costs was replacing all the containers at that point, but our contract, well, officially expires under April this year, was that?
Yeah, uh...
So...
LaSalle brought in Lake Shore, I believe, there's a newer company serving primarily the Schlossmark, but around here, it seems to be down near five Waste Management or Republic.
Princeton, there's another community that just changed as well.
Let's get into revenues, if you're ready.
We want to start.
Page seven?
Yeah, page seven for revenues. Uh, the, the current draft in front of you does not include any increases in general fund property taxes. So that's the first twelve or fifteen or so lines in here for real estate taxes for different purposes. Um, there's no change from the prior year.
Look, look at the stock. We based our revenue estimates on history and also, uh, we, there's a report that the league, uh, produces every year that allows us estimate what kind of, uh, changes the state revenues, the state source revenues will have on our budget based on per capita payments that are made. So we're using both the history, like, sales taxes, as well as, uh, the recommendations coming from the state, reform our estimates.
Yeah, so, so some of the, uh, sales tax has been trending up, which is in line with what I M L projects. Um, so we're projecting a five percent increase there, which is about a hundred and fifty thousand more than what we budgeted last year. Uh, that's line three four three. As Dave said, the utility taxes, the cable, gas, electric, water, we use three-year averages, so there's not too much in terms of change, maybe a thousand, a couple thousand here and there. Uh, but those stay pretty stable, uh, year over year. Video gaming, which is on the top of page eight. Uh, that's continued to bounce back after, after a drop during the COVID period. Uh, so we exceeded our four hundred and twenty-five thousand, or we projected we'll exceed that, so we're gonna pump it next year to four hundred and seventy thousand, which is what we're, what we're on pace tracking for.
And that's all, the, what we actually received in twenty-three?
Yep. A couple of other ones, um, I M L projects that the state use tax was being over allocated, so they're projecting a twenty-six percent decrease in that uh, funding source, which is a decrease of about a hundred and twenty-five thousand in the budget. Uh, use tax, sorry, it was back on page seven, I jumped out a little bit, that was nine three four six, so towards the bottom, or page seven.
Is that the P P R T?
That is not P P R T.
Okay, 'cause I know that's being scaled back also.
Correct, P P R T is...
Three eighty.
Yes, line three eighty, so of course the bottom of page eight. Uh, you can see in twenty twenty-three, we received over a billion dollars. Uh, we did scale back on the budget for last year, but they, we continue to see less P P R T, which is also in line with what I M L has been saying. So this year, we're thinking we should end with about six hundred and thirty thousand, which is what we're gonna make the budget next year. So that is a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar decrease, uh, year over year in terms of what we're budgeting for that revenue. Income taxes has been increasing, so they're projecting a two and a half percent increase, which is about a hundred and five thousand over what we budgeted for the current year. We had some grant activity in the budget for the current year, which we're not anticipating any in the general fund for next year, so that's a seventy-three thousand dollar decrease. There is the, the, um, school resource officer agreement, um, so we're anticipating a little bit shy of a hundred thousand in terms of that agreement. Another big one is the ambulance billing side of things, um, so that's line, on page ten, uh, line four two five. Uh, this, this, this year has been the first full year that we've been getting the, the EMS billing. Um, so our original estimate was just based on projections of what we thought we might get, uh, which after a year of seeing it, I think we might have been a little bit high on the projections. Subject to change if, I mean, there's additional runs or anything like that, but we did opt to drop it a hundred thousand to be more in line with what we've been seeing recently. In, in total, the general fund, we're only projecting a four thousand dollar increase in total in general fund revenues over year. Any questions on any of the, the general revenues?
Yeah, on the, uh, page seven, looks like the bottom half of this, of most of those state shared revenues? Because there's a cannabis tax, I don't think we have a distributor here in Streeter, do we?
That's a state.
That's, yeah, that is.
So it's a state share?
Yeah, and I think it's distributed per capita.
Yeah, correct, yeah, so they're projecting a five percent decrease on that one as well.
That's a good chunk of money for us not doing anything.
I suspect that Dave did a bigger chunk.
Yeah, much better.
Much better.
About how much money do we get a month in state shared revenues? Just a ballpark, I know, it's a...
Probably in the four hundred thousand range. If I had, that's a rough estimate, but...
Yeah.
I think sales tax is probably two hundred thousand. Not, that home rule is probably about a hundred, and the others are about another, about a hundred.
And that's all based on population?
Most of them.
Another reason to push annexation, there's a lot of money there.
Well, we lost potential, uh, when our population went down in twenty twenty, potential revenue.
And then the, I guess the next piece that, that goes in with the, where we started with, uh, property taxes. Uh, there's a, there was an additional packet, uh, separate from the budget document that looks like this, it's got some yellow and some, some red right at the top. We have levy requests. We did provide a couple of different scenarios, um, I guess we give a little bit of background on, um, where these different scenarios came from and kind of what we're, what we're looking at. The, uh, for the two pension funds, the state, uh, the last four, five years, we, we've been able to continue levying at the hundred percent target based on the private actuary reports. Uh, for the current year, just to stay at the hundred percent level between police and fighter, it's a, almost a two hundred and five thousand dollar increase over what we were extending last year. So that's about a four point six percent increase in terms of our total levy. So that's just to keep our pension funds whole. Um, the other piece of this as well is, the library has not formally submitted their request to us?
No, they have.
They, they have?
A letter, a email.
Oh, okay, okay.
While you're gone.
Ah, that makes sense, okay. Uh, but what, what we were anticipating was, was based on past practice of the library, is to, to try to stay at there. The library has a max rate, which I know was increased by referendum a couple of years ago, um, for the library corporate line. And then they also levy for the building, uh, building maintenance line for the library. So they, they basically look at the county provides an estimated E A B for the coming year, and then the library would just take their, their allowance the times the E A B, and that's how the levy requests have been put together. The E A B estimate, it was, was relatively large, the increase this year. I think it was looking at over ten percent. So based on the library trying to keep the, the rate the same, that equates to a sixty, roughly a sixty-six thousand dollar increase over the prior year. So because that's levied as part of the city's aggregate levy, that's an additional about one and a half percent in terms of an increase over the prior year extension. So, uh, what we're looking at is just to keep the pensions whole and fulfill the library requests. It's a six point oh eight percent increase.
And that would be the second page?
That's general two.
So it's, the, the first page, um, simply represents the, uh, the levy, if we maintain the levy at four ninety-nine, which is below the, the taxation public area. If you, um, that would reduce general fund revenues, the fund operations by about fifty thousand dollars. So if we tax at four ninety-nine, fully fund our pensions and meet the library's request, which I think we're obligated to do under state law. Uh, once the library, for its levying requests, I think we're bound to approve it. And, uh, and so, um, we're not gonna be able to, before we fund our pensions, fund the library and stay under, uh, five percent, so without taking money out of our general fund.
Yeah, so like Dave said, that, that first scenario would be the five percent pulling money out of the general fund to, to stay.
But I'm gonna offer you a solution when we're all up, so that we can stay more than happy.
We did provide a couple of scenarios, three and four, was, was just looking at the numbers to see what it really would take to see any increases in the general fund revenue. So we did provide a couple of higher increase scenarios, just, just for purpose of comparisons, you could see what we were looking at, uh, to see any increases in the general fund. You could see what we were looking at to see any increases in the general fund. So those are our last scenarios, three and four, there, for comparison sake.
So the pension hit is largely due to funding the unfunded liabilities and that for our operations. So the property tax increases that we're anticipating are really the paper services that have been provided to the community in prior years, point back some point in time. We're obligated to meet our pension costs, or we can make monies available for operations. And given the level of other funding, particularly in the prior pension, I don't think we want to risk not funding it at a hundred percent. So, are you done with your part?
Yeah, if there's any questions on the revenue.
So ordinarily, I'd kind of stop here and then give you time to kind of go through everything and then we can, but I can continue and give you kind of my current thoughts. Now, there's some additional work that we need to do. Steve was out the past couple of days. And so I just wanna nail down some things like the library levy and something like that. There's some other aspects here, but... Give you a sense of where I think my re-division group will fall. Here you go. So, there's, the column on the left is, is the general fund. The column on, or the, the numbers on the right is the home rule sales tax fund. General fund revenues versus expenses. Everything that you saw tonight shows if we refund everything that was requested, all the capital, we'd be in the red by nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. So the first thing I did was walk through the budget, pulled out the capital, because what I'm interested in is to match continuing costs with continuing revenues and looking at one-time costs, capital costs with one-time revenues. And so I went through and just pulled out the capital, made some minor changes to a couple of operating accounts where I thought we could sustain a loss, just to see what that would do in terms of getting us the balance. And sure enough, I got the essential balance to above fifty-five hundred dollars in the red. Now that, now I could make that number appear to be zero by, in a thirteen million dollar budget, I can make a five thousand dollar change in either revenue or, or expenses to get the balance. By pulling all the capital out, we can get the balance, but I don't think that that would be a prudent thing to do. So I, I, I then looked at, well, what monies do we have available? What do we budget on the capital side that maybe we ought to kind of reassess where we're at? And that's where we, we should be looking at our home rule sales tax. That, that tax was approved by the voters at a referendum, and we're obligated to spend it on capital projects and our property tax relief. Although property tax relief, I don't think is defined anywhere. And so, and this, and we needed Steve to come back because some of the reports here didn't kind of line, line up with the numbers that Jeremy was tracking on his reports. And so we, and, and we can get pretty confused on the timing of payments and transfers and so forth. But we began fiscal year twenty-four with seven hundred and seven thousand dollars in the home rule sales tax fund. Now, our current budget during fiscal year twenty-twenty-four shows a hundred and seventy thousand dollar loss. We're spending a hundred and seventy thousand dollars more than we're taking in in sales taxes in that year, which is not unusual because you kind of pace your projects and manage your projects. Some years you'll overspend, other years you'll overspend. So we're expecting a balance in our, in the, for fiscal year twenty-five, January, one of five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Now, if we funded everything in the home rule fund that was requested here tonight, including the Nether Building, we would have a three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar loss in the, in, in the year, which would mean that my remaining balance, after the end of twenty-twenty-five in the home rule sales tax fund, would be a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. So we still have money left over. So trying to assess how much money we have available to spend, because we don't really need to keep a large balance in the home rule sales tax fund unless we have a capital project we're planning on doing in the future that we're gonna save money for. So with that hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars beginning build balance, let's say for the sake of argument, we pulled out the Nether Project and took that money and applied it to other needs in the city, we would have just under six hundred and ninety thousand dollars to spend. So then I went back to the general fund and I started plugging back projects. And so I initially took out some demolition costs, took out one of the two shelters. So I'm putting that money back in. It'd be funded generator project, we funded the Bosnic lights and south side light project at a hundred and seventy. That, if we stop there, I, I had three hundred and ninety thousand dollars spent out of the home rule sales tax fund. But then I thought, well, let's continue. Because if I don't, if we don't wanna, if, if we wanna continue spending on that balance, which we can do, what, what could we, what could we do? You know, the park board is looking at wanting to construct pickleball courts. There's a definite need for additional playgrounds in town. And so if I allocated another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for park projects, to spend a total of about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the park projects that I identified there for the year, I'd be at six hundred and forty thousand dollars. But we just mentioned earlier that I'm gonna be fifty thousand dollars short in general fund if we fund the, because I'll have a reduction in property taxes to support general fund operations of about fifty thousand dollars if we levy only at four point ninety-nine percent. So I'm gonna have to make up that either by additional revenues that will transfer over or reducing expenses. But, uh, if, if, if we do that, then, then I'm back to what's available in the sales tax fund. So what I suggest is you guys have to kind of determine what your priorities are, what kinds of projects you wanna fund. Now, as we fund down this, spend down the, the, the sales tax fund, we're doing it at the same time that we're spending down sewer plant depreciation fund, because we got a three million dollar project, one million is grant funded, two million is locally funded. And so we're gonna be spending some cash in the next year. So we're gonna have to pay particularly close attention to the timing of revenues and expenses so that we don't run into liquidity issue. But we would be doing this at a time where our general fund balance is about forty percent, thirty-nine, forty percent. And we're not anticipating, even though we budgeted a deficit in the current year, because there was, when we approved the budget, I think we had a couple of no votes, that you didn't wanna do that. I said, oh, we're good, safe. I think we're coming, we're, we're expecting it to be about balance. We're, we're, we continue to perform pretty well. Now, I do have a couple of unknowns going forward. We have an unsettled fire department contract. And, and then we have the garbage waste management contract and what that cost would be. Waste management isn't general fund, but if we don't raise garbage rates to cover those actual costs, then I'm gonna lose, at some point, we'll have to transfer general fund monies to cover that shortage. Right now, we're just experiencing a loss on the books, but that loss will have to be wiped out at some point. We just can't continue to run that fund in the, in the red indefinitely. So what I would think is maybe at our next meeting, we kind of have a list of projects. Now, when you circulate the parks, you have a park board. So I, I would think you would wanna come up with an amount of money that you would tell the park board and say, okay, spend a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand, whatever the number is that you wanna give them for park projects. If that, in fact, is your priority. And Jeremy, really good, we talked about it this afternoon, he'll come up with some cost estimates. You know, one of the things I, that bugs me is the fact that we have Bosnec that has never had a paid parking lot, and it's full of potholes. And when people from outside the street are coming in, and it's a, it's a mess. And, you know, that park's been there for however long. Maybe we oughta spend fifty thousand dollars or whatever it would cost to put the asphalt down. Now, we would require that of any other commercial development in town. So just holding the standards we apply to others to ourselves. And that could be part of what we want to spend money at. But at the end of the day, there's only gonna be so much you can do. But the, the lights, some playground equipment, I think you have the opportunity in this next year, you wanna do some community projects, knowing that we, where our general fund is in a pretty healthy position. And these are one-time costs using one-time revenues. So like, uh, where we, we don't seem to have, at this point, a loss. Now, I did mention I cut off the squad car. You know, that just means next year we might have to buy another. But we have a pretty young, healthy fleet in the, in the, in the police department. I also cut out the fire truck purchase at Downs, money set aside. And my position is, well, that, we don't have operational money to set aside, so we're just taking money that's already in savings and continuing to set it aside. So if that's your intent, then we just wouldn't spend anything, continue to keep the money aside. But we haven't, as a community, at least in the time that I've been here, spent any real money on public improvements out where the community is really well done. And I'm kind of at a point where I'd love to see money go into the Nether Building, but maybe it's time to spend some money in the parks and make, make sure you're kind of feel a little better about it. So particularly that the park board gets frustrated that we haven't really offered anything for them to, any projects for kind of what we see. So. Who's your thought?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out when we took or went by, isn't it? I, so far, I believe mine is nineteen seventy-seven, it was renamed. So we had the West City before then, but...
It could have been longer before seventy-seven.
Yeah, but that was renamed.
Seventy-three or seventy-four.
Yeah. But I, I didn't know when it, when it, when we, when it became what it is, but that was the closest date I found.
Yeah, seventy-three, seventy-four is when we organized first girls softball league. But the fields have been there for...
Yeah, for years.
They weren't as professional looking as they are.
Yeah, but James Street is now being well utilized by the community given that the high schools using it and seeing a lot more activity there. The parks are looking nice, but we haven't, we, we need to start buying some playground equipment and, you know, I don't think, I just wanna have to justify it to the girls softball program why the boys have lights and play at night and the girls can't. And we still have a couple of poles at the south side that need to be replaced too, that failed the inspection. So you know, those, some of those lights might have to come down. But, yeah, we cut the poles by summer just to eliminate the safety problem, because two of them, I think two of them fell. And so we don't wanna have a storm come up and then the kids get injured.
So our next meeting on this, we have another council meeting November twentieth?
Right, and the other aspect here is...
There's some public hearings.
We have to schedule a public hearing for the budget itself. If you, if you desire to tax above four point ninety-nine, that's the truth in taxation, we'll need to do a public hearing for that. Now, it can happen at the same night, but the notices are different. And so I'm not recommending we, I don't feel comfortable with four ninety-nine, to be honest with you. People are taxed out, but I don't, given the cost of the pensions, I don't think we have much of an alternative. I would have to find two hundred thousand dollars in operations. And I wouldn't wanna use home rule. If I start using home rule taxes to pay, sales taxes to pay for pensions, that will never end. So I'm gonna keep that as a continuing revenue to fund that cost as opposed to using, diverting our capital budget. Now, at, at some point in the not-too-distant future, I think we need to do something with the Nether Building. And that needs resolve, and we talked about it at staff level, where we're just gonna have to do maybe one less street project or, you know, we'll have to pare down in a given year a street project. And we may wanna do that anyways, to maybe do a year of a lot of sidewalks or maybe another trail project or something like that. But, um, but going into this year, do we wanna spend five hundred thousand on the Nether Building? Or would we rather spend it on something that the, the taxpayers can actually see, directly see the benefit as opposed to indirectly? And that's your decision, not mine. But I'm giving you, I'm laying out kind of a path you can choose to take. Can I say anything? Oh, I did cut off the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the excavator. I think that's an important piece of equipment. It's just, you know, maybe we can fit it in next year. And the fire trucks, we're gonna have one truck paid off here, I think, the next year, correct? It is paid off. On that, it's gonna most likely have to be a dead project. So we need to be ready to order it either dead or allocate sales taxes to fund it, which would be in appropriate use as you're, it's a, it's a capital purchasing year, avoiding property taxes. So at the next meeting, you're gonna have to make a decision on the property taxes. And give, give us some sense. I think we'll need to do the budget notice after that meeting too. Now, you can always come in later at the December meeting, when you may actually approve it and do it lower than what we budget, what we publish. You just can't go more. So if, if we're publishing, you know, that we're gonna spend a hundred dollars, you can't decide after that notice to spend a hundred and twenty. You can spend eighty or a hundred, but you can't, you can't go more. So that's the only limiting thing is that, once you give us the go, you can't spend any more than once. So let's do that at the next meeting in two weeks.
So we're gonna review November twentieth, the public hearing will probably be December fourth?
Are we gonna have enough days in there for the notes itself?
We just need to go to the eighteenth.
Now, final approval would be the eighteenth, we have to do the public hearing on the fourth.
Yeah, well, maybe there's a need, we'll, we'll let you know. But we're gonna have to chart it out on a calendar, make sure that we're complying in terms of the days. I figured, I don't know at all, it's not in my head. So we'll, we'll look at that and...
How much ten days?
That's what I'm getting at. Is there ten days between the two, well, it'd be fourteen, but one...
Between what day and what day?
Yeah.
Between the twentieth and the, and December? Will be sixteen days.
Yeah, and the next day.
Right.
There's two, yeah, two weeks.
Sixteen and fourteen.
Between the twentieth to the fourth.
But if you want budget options or levy options, don't wait until at, at the meeting that we scheduled approval to try to get those, because it's gonna take some of our, our part to get that ready for you.
So the, so, I just reviewed the actions, come up with your kind of wish list? What, what you wanna cut, what you wanna... What, what you want to cut, what you want to spend. I did, I, I did meet with a couple of people from the Parks Board. Actually, earlier today, and I think they would be elated, but they also are expected for grant money too. So some of the big projects that we'd have to go after, like another Oslo grant and apply for that.
Yeah, I think we ought to apply for everything we can, there's no shortage of names. Oh, the other aspect that we talked about at a staff level, Jeremy and I did, we're planning a lot of street work next year on Bronson and mainly Bronson and also Illinois. And given the condition of Illinois, we think that that project should proceed. But maybe Bronson can be pushed off and, and then spend that money on Boyce Street. So that if, in the next year, something shakes out in the repurposing of, at least, you know, some of the Owens facility, maybe there would be an opportunity for us to lay in a state grant to help facilitate that. I don't want to leave any money if I can get outside money to support stuff that we're going to otherwise pay. That'd be a good thing. But the other aspect is Jeremy mentioned that the amount of concrete patching that Bronson requires, that maybe it would be better just to do a, an overlay, asphalt overlay. You've got a better surface, at least in the initial years. And he does reflective, that, what material do you apply to keep it reflective cracking out?
It's a geotech fabric for that.
Yeah, he did that on Ford Street, right? So that, that, that project could be re-avisioned, if you will, and maybe pushed off a year and then we'll move Boyce Street forward. Boyce, the people, some of the people on Boyce Street, we told this for next year?
I'd, I'd be telling them two years, because that's where it's at.
Two years? Um, not, yeah, not next year, the year following. And so there may be an opportunity to kind of shift the projects around a little bit, given the announcement at Owens, might make sense to do that.
Is there a bigger, is there a big difference between asphalt and the concrete?
Yeah, yes.
Because with Owens shutting down, you want to have that beating of that asphalt.
Yeah, but you have work on Chab and all that, goes to the north, the Ford, and we just did Ford. So the whole area needs help. But
Quantum takes us left, but that's
Yeah.
It's one of those where it's like, it's a good time to do it because it will be
Won't be used, but on the other hand
Also, do you put the money on something, but that? Those questions.
You know, doing the road worth might make that, pieces of that building more marketable to other businesses that may look a coming in.
Well.
Where they
I'd be optimistic.
I know, or you put equipment in that tears up the whole road, you see that too, so.
I, I just look at it as
Whatever we do, it'll be wrong.
It may be an opportunity for us to lay in a state grant.
Awful Facebook.
Given the fact that a hundred and fifty people lost their jobs, it's a big facility, you're maybe opting to get some outside money to support infrastructure around them.
They're going to be there till next June or so.
Are, are, are there any wish list items? Because everything that was presented tonight came from staff. Is there anything that council would want us to start looking into cost estimating or anything like that? Because
I have a request.
What ends up happening is we get into that crunch period and there's not enough time to adjust anything.
I have a request, it's a pretty minor one, new laptops. My laptop hasn't worked twenty percent of the time I've been on the council. It's off six month, it's off six weeks, I get it fixed, I have to go over to Peru to get them to fix it. It works maybe two weeks and then it's another six or eight weeks, it doesn't work again. I don't know how many emails I'm getting from, from citizens complaining, and I'm not getting back to them because I don't know, I have emails, it's very frustrating.
Is everyone in the, I mean, laptops are, used to be three, four thousand dollars apiece, now they're six hundred dollars.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a big budget, I know Dave brought his in, it was so frustrating.
I can buy five of them within our current budget, we'll just take care of it. It's, it's
Dave brought his in and said, I've done with it, because we're just so frustrated.
I mean, yeah, I don't know, like, is laptop or tablet or something, they need to be upgraded?
I will, I will contact, connect these two laptops.
I don't like laptops to begin with, but if I'm going to have to have one, I want one that works.
Yeah, the advantage of a laptop is you can carry it around, we can't really do that with a desktop.
We can get it fixed.
Would you rather have a tablet?
A tablet would be, it's just
What, what's
Just provide emails that Patty sends to the council.
If you prefer a tablet, I can do that too. I don't think there's much of a cost savings one versus the other. Because I'm not going to
Have you had any problems?
Yeah, I, I have, cracked my computer for two years.
Would you rather have tablets or, or
Whatever I, whatever I do, so I don't have to change my email address every three months, if I have to do that, I'll just leave it here. It's frustrating, you have to call, you get an notice that says you have to change your email address.
Why, your password?
Yeah, the password, I mean.
Why, why?
For security reasons.
Security reasons.
I don't get that email.
Oh, we? My password gets changed by the way, huh?
I don't.
I said, I don't want to change it, I'm like, then he gave me some other, I said, I'll take it to you home, leave it, never used to get it.
We can change that. You see, email is, that used to be done in Texas or somewhere, we've always had problems. Now we're in, it's in Peru. And we're kind of, and we're paying more for it, they're a good company. They don't, yeah, they're probably, you're probably, someone at some point checked the box that you change the email password every thirty days. But I don't, that box isn't checked for me, I have the same one that I have at
That'd be nice.
Yeah, so.
I just want one that works.
All right, if you, if you have something that you wanted to add to the budget cap item or something that needs to be cost estimated, let, let me and Jeremy know.
Oil and chipping of alleys?
Oil and chipping of alleys?
Alleys.
Alleys.
They would constantly go on with the grader and add gravel and all that stuff.
I'd like to work towards that, I, I did have some money in the budget for that other consulting to start some oil and chipping of, like, the driveway down here at the canoe launch and the upper road and the rail park. As a kind of a practice for us to kind of learn how to do it.
They don't have the manpower.
Right, right, that's another thing, that's, that's why something like, you know, the
If we buy the equipment, we don't have time to use it, we're based on money on equipment.
Right.
I'd rather just have somebody professional come in, grade them, get them done, be over with. Because with eight guys, during the summer, you're down to what, four or five, the vacations and stuff, you can't get anything done, so take on additional new projects and just put the thought behind it and other stuff.
It's, it's that balance between wanting newer good equipment so that it can be more efficient. On the other hand, you don't want to spend so much money on equipment and not have the people to operate the equipment so that this new efficient equipment is parked in the garage for eleven and a half months out of the year, and you're only pulling it out. You mentioned at a, at a meeting about the compressor, air compressor. We're probably not going to replace the air compressor, we'll just rent one for the few weeks we need it. So we, when we're looking at equipment replacement or new purchases, renting may be an option for us, because we just don't have the personnel. Even if I could find some capital money to buy something that could be, so like a paving machine or something, we don't have the people to actually do the work.
And there's, there's no money in the budget, you told me before, for additional police officers or for additional public works?
Now, look at your personnel costs on law enforcement and how it's trending.
Well, I understand that, but I don't, personally, I don't think we can afford not to hire more with all the crap we've got going on in town. These guys can't get to it all, it's hard to investigate and stuff. I have increased some since I've been here, but I think we still could use more.
It's not a question of need, it's a question of what continuing revenues we get. It's important, if you hired the officer at sixty thousand dollars a year, but before long, he's going to be making ninety thousand, plus add another fifty for benefits. And where's that money going to come from? Particularly in the last year or two, the state now is clawing back money. So our budget looked a little better in the year, past years, but that money is now being clawed back. I, I really would caution you to increasing headcount unless you're pretty convinced that you're going to have a continuing revenue source to pay for that cost. As opposed to spending a reserve number, you know, a capital item. Because that's a one-time, you're not going to buy that, though, you spent a hundred and seventy thousand dollars on streetlights or on park lights or playground equipment, you're not doing that every year. You're just doing it that one year.
To me, with the reputation we're getting of all the, of all the shootings that's been over the last two years, I can't see anybody wanting to come to town, thinking it's unsafe, which hurts us all over. And there's no, there's nothing to budget there for an economic development director?
Same problem I had.
I can find a hundred thousand dollars out here for, for that.
I can find it too.
Because we definitely need a economic development director. We've got, we've got nobody personally fighting for streeter every day of the week. We're among these little groups, we need somebody fighting for us, or else in five years, we're going to be a ghost town. And you think the shooting is bad now, it's going to be even worse in five years if we don't do something about it now. It's nice, it's nice for us residents that live here all the time, it sucks that we have all this going on. You get to go home on the weekends when these shootings happen, and we all are stuck here. And when it's all said and done, when your job's done, you're going to go back home, and we're still stuck here with the things stuck. And it just frustrates the hell out of me that we can't get anything done to support our community and our citizens. Really frustrating.
So what do you want me to do?
What would we cut out of the budget to permanently, year after year, have that money and, and that backhoe, two hundred fifty thousand, that that would hire two, three people, that's only one year.
Right.
Can't cut a backhoe out of the budget every year to, to pay for them, you know. There's only so much money, and I, I'd love to add, you know, four more people to public works and three more to each of the other departments, but
Well, I'd rather have safety than more playground equipment and more stuff done in the parks and things, if we're, you know, that's, that's nice to have as recreation, but safety comes first.
Well, I, I agree. And we could come up with the money for one year. But when you hire somebody, that's an ongoing expense, it's going to get more expensive every year. So you have to have, like Dave said, you have to have that revenue stream year after year after year when you start adding personnel.
If you, if you look at big picture, I've always thought that our sales taxes in a community like Street, given the amount of unincorporated residents, should be hired. If we were a home rule community, if we had to hire sales tax, because we can generate a fair amount of money through sales taxes, then that would allow us to either spend more or have lower property taxes, or a combination of the two. But we're tapped out on the sales tax. We've had some, really a good growth in sales taxes. Some of it is inflationary, some of it is, I think, organic, it's just the economy here, at least until now, has been strong enough to offer growth of, in that line. We've also had growth of gambling money that's been beneficial to us. What has been growing, you like the cable TV franchise, we've taken a hit there. Our population count has hurt us across the board, all per capita dollars that might have been available if we had more people. I'm just trying to submit a budget that you folks can afford. And if you want to shift money out of capital to operations, okay, fine, I'm not here to stand in your way. I'm just giving you advice as to how to sustain it over time.
I think the long-term solution, I could say that for twenty years, is annexation. I think, now this is the only town I know where thirty percent of our population doesn't pay taxes because they live on the other side of the street.
Right.
Not only are we using the, the real estate taxes, but we're losing all the shared state revenues, lose, you know, losing a lot of sales tax. I think that's a long-term solution. Steve, you're waving your hand back there.
I just, I have a lot of common public. I guess one of the issues I see in weed dealt with a number of years as we were in industrial development and economic development is the overabundance of low-cost health. And I think if you're going to solve the problem of the crime we've ever seen, you're going to have to address that. And from our numbers, what I, what I've seen, what I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was fifty-five hundred households in the community. Do you, do you know how many landlords there are?
No, no.
A lot of them.
Type on every January, but
A lot, there's a lot of hundred.
Now, a lot of hundred, we've got how many registered with the city?
The numbers come up, but I'd have to go look, but we're sixty percent.
It's math. It's math, and I had an incident in my neighborhood, I was talking to four of the officers last week, Thursday, Friday night. And they agreed that the issue is a low-cost housing. And you do have some zoning that we were able to push through a few years ago and put some teeth into trying to lock down the, the housing issue. But right now, it's, you know, you, you get, and these people aren't working. They're not working, they're not contributing to the community in any way, not at all. You gotta, you gotta lock that down somehow. And I know back in ninety-one, I was part of a push to put in home rule. And home rule is very beneficial, but you've got to have the right people up here. And I, I don't think that that's a pretty heavy lift. When it takes one or two bad apples and that system gets blown right up, because the immediate response is going to be, you're going to raise my taxes. You know, it gives you additional powers to, to do that. You're going to have to gain some trust within the community, say that's not what we're going to do, but you're going to really have to crack down on the housing. And you can do that and put the burden on the hallmark. So that you're not spending fifty, sixty, eighty thousand dollars a year in the city budget to tear these things down. Some of the things we did downtown when we were working on the start committee, there was a lot of absence team owners within the downtown district of these buildings that are dilapidated. And we basically threatened them. Folks, this isn't an asset, this is a liability. We're going to make it awfully expensive for you if you don't start moving these buildings and make them affordable for repurposing. And all of a sudden, a light goes out. Uncle Billy left me this, like, three hundred dollars a month, ran out, it's like, it's like a load of bones, that, you know, that's falling down behind your neighbor. And, you know, we're going to hit you for about a hundred grand to tear it down if you don't get it straight. And then you can start moving these things and get it back into the tax halls, you can use the same tax. You can just, I think that's a cheap year is what costs, you know?
We've significantly, over the past couple of years, increased our code enforcement. I think we're, we're seeing definite signs of improvement, there's still
As I say, as it goes, look at the legal line item in, in twenty-two twelve. We, we overspent the budget by twice on legal this year, so we're, we are pushing, it's just, but, yeah.
There's lack of teeth, right, Jeremy? If they don't show up for court, it's
If they don't show up for court, I mean, we have the next step, but then it's the cost associated to go to the next step to take them out of, up to the circuit court. And that's, we've done that more, but you'll look at the line and it's, you're, you're paying Cheryl and Klein, Thorpe Jenkins more to do those things.
And then, yeah, and then we're putting liens on it, so I know there's another house that it's probably going to be one of our bigger problems, and it seems to be on, what, Bridge and Everett? The Rooney's Bridge, it's starting to be the new one-twenty-one Hickory, West Hickory.
One East. And Hattie Clay Evans was born. Not that that matters. Just a little trivia.
But it's the next one, and maybe that's a kind of, you know, letter from Cheryl to that owner and saying, hey, this is the last person. This is what happened.
Another avenue, political pressure on, on housing. And that's hot. You know, we looked into that a little bit, where do they get their money, where's that, that's hot. And they basically created a little industry for themselves and depending on your political persuasion or where they're from or where they're represented, they want in their town, they push it to another town. Or it's math. It's math. When I'm out walking around, you're exercising, riding my bike, I see houses around town with little pieces of paper. And they'll say, this is a LaSalle County Audiatory, and they're moving people in and out every thirty, forty days. That's not good. You know, that's when you need to call your legislature to pick up the phone over and out and say, hey, what are you doing? What are you doing? It's just a few suggestions. Cause the money you spend here, you're treating the symptom, but you're not addressing the root cause. You gotta get to the root and you gotta knock that out. And I think if you toughen up for a year or two and set a precedent, make the investment, then it'll dry up the habit of the procedures that are being done now. It's just my suggestions, my observation, but we've looked at this for a number of years. An annexation, David, I mean, we looked at areas of town, industrial development group, and you gotta really do your homework. Because you're going to see net in and net out. And you may find out that you need an extra truck or an extra man or an extra, you know. It has to be, you have to balance. You can add and extend ten houses and find out you lost them.
Well, it depends on what you promise.
Yeah, which is. And good points though, but.
It's all, it's all related. It's the, you know, quality of life, it's economic development. They all tie into each other and they're so.
It's, it's.
It's so table dear.
Over the past fifty years.
I would encourage, just as an observer looking aside, I would encourage you to look at the root cause and put a lot of emphasis on that. And then it's just human nature. You want good people like the name of good people and bad people like the name of bad people. It's just like your work environment. When you go to work, you want to go over to people you really enjoy, you have to be around them. That's pretty simple, human nature. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I say anybody else's wishlist? I. I do, um. I mean, I was just looking at this one and, and costs. We had some estimates for some videos done, some marketing videos and different things for economic development purposes and why the eyes saw them in tourism and the chamber was going to do one. I looked at Mariner Park and that playground was put in in nineteen ninety-five and we had those couple of kids disturb basically so it don't fire. And had gotten some funding for that. So it'd be nice to at least replace that one. And then if there's anything that we do some strategic economic development things, is there like a site selection company or something that can help? Maybe it's not a full-time person, but is there another avenue we're missing right now? I hope there's another way to look at that, but.
Still my wishes.
Just got some hand ideas for November twentieth. That's also going to be the meeting with the solar firm. So it'll be a busy.
Should they have more people in there? If you want to hire additional personnel regardless of department, you would need to take part of the home rule sales tax, apply to an operational cost for the foreseeable future. And that would diminish or reduce the amount that would be available for other types of capital projects. You can do it. I'm not saying you can't, but then. You were having paper table. Well, then the neighborhoods aren't going to get, and you're going to be spreading out there.
No, and it's, it's not always the the salary cost. It's the legacy cost, the thirty years down the road, paying the pension and be all you're doing.
Well, we're spending two, over two hundred thousand dollars to pay for services that were provided to the community twenty years ago.
Two point four million.
And you guys are having to take the hit. Cause you know, you'd be raising taxes to pay for the benefit from some time ago. And there's no guarantee, even if you hire ten more cops, that you're not going to have the idiots shooting their guns off.
We could have fifty police officers. I don't know how it's going to stop somebody at two in the morning from coming out of his house and shooting.
This department is solving the crimes that are solvable. The ones that they hit, the incidents that they have been able to solve are because of, usually because of just lack of cooperation among even among the victims.
And it's not just police department. It's also part of the police department. We're so lacking there with manpower, it's scary. Where I would love to hire four more officers, but then public works also needs four additional people. That's not counting the help that they get during the summer for cutting grass and whatnot, but they don't, they have hardly any equipment to manpower that they have now can barely operate it. So it's, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't.
I heard it from the address before. And it's just maybe, it's an exaggeration, but you know, if you get ten bad people out of the community, you can lay off half the police force.
Right. Well, we can get them held, first of all. Our more persistent repeat offenders. We can get some cooperation from that in a row. That's a problem. I mean, we have people that are, you know, persona non grata have been trespassed from every retail establishment. And we've made thirty-four arrests of them and revolving door. It's, where does it end?
And that's after they're in here, getting back there again, is housing. You got it. Disincentified. They're coming here.
Or make it uncomfortable. They come here and commit crimes.
Yeah.
Light a heat light and beat on them. And we're getting there. I mean, we have so much we've gotten out of Trident in the last year. We haven't seen in many years out of Trident. Done sixteen, seventeen search warrants since last year. You know, we put the drug dealers on notice that we are paying attention. We are locking them up. We do direct admissions with the South County deputies, with our officers, with, we bring some people in over time. We even use Livingston County. And we concentrate on some of those peoples for an entire day. And we made some very good seizures, some very good cases on those people, but if there's no teeth in the criminal justice system.
Yeah, the two individuals that started the fire in the church.
Four weeks.
Yeah, well, they were charged with burglary because they removed, what, a bowl?
But that should have been given us the night, the day it happened. We should have gotten burglary charges included, the minimum.
But they, the state's attorney still hasn't filed arson charges and yet we got them on video with the bowl leaving the, leaving the building with the minute smoke coming out of the building.
We've asked that man for help before and he's kind of slapped us in our face and all.
And he appeared before our community and kind of slammed.
Oh, yeah, that's.
At the town hall, yeah.
I kind of, yeah.
This wasn't in street, but the one that killed me with the safety act was the gentleman they found in Indiana. Charged with criminal predatory sexual assault against a minor in LaSalle. Two failure to appear warrants and he was out within fourteen hours. We found him in Indiana. It probably took longer to arrest him, get him from Indiana into LaSalle County than it did for him to sit in jail.
Same guy then it got.
They just.
They went with the monitor and you cut the monitor off.
Yeah, I mean, it's that one. I'm like, what worse crime can you do than that and then not appear twice?
Well, early last month, we found a IDOC bracelet by Thorne's. Had a check and belonged to one of our more prolific thieves that have been terrorizing our town all summer. Cut it off and just threw it there. They know electronic monitoring is really not an effective.
I don't know, but it's just, it's every time we get an example like this, if we just keep sending it to our legislators and just saying, here's another one, here's another one, here's another one. And just give them a list of every time until they, until they block our emails and calls, but.
You would just think that these judges will get tired of seeing the same people every day in a courtroom. Say, hey, hold it. That's it. You're going to sit. We don't.
We need to get back to the budget.
Yes.
Well, it's all budget.
Well, I mean, it's, yeah.
Very frustrating.
Very frustrating.
So, yeah, let's.
It was a good conversation.
No, it's, I guess with that, some other towns I've had, good luck hiring the lobbyist over the app. That's another, it's not a legacy cost. There's no pension. There's no. Just a thought. Lobby on our behalf. Okay. Anything more with the budget for tonight? It'll be back November twentieth. Most likely public hearing December fourth and then final approval December eighteen. Item three, we're done with that. We'll go to consent agenda, motion and second to approve the consent agenda with fund warrant totals of five hundred fifty-three thousand, four hundred ninety dollars and ninety-nine cents. Tim with the motion, Dave read with the second. Any discussion? Clear color roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reeve?
Aye.
Mary P. Dye?
Aye. Item four, so the official comments?
The only comment I have is live of streeters in full swing. Looking for volunteers if you want to come up and every Saturday and sometimes Sunday from nine AM to two PM, we'll be in the park decorating.
I saw where the park committee was talking about maybe putting pickleball courts out at Anderson Field. Do you know where they were thinking about putting it in?
No, they're, um, they actually have a, I believe, maybe next week, but on recommendation, they have three parks potentially where they suggested.
Any more from our?
We're taking that equipment out.
I don't know.
That being an option, that would be an excellent spot.
They're open?
Yeah, I think it was Anderson, Mariner, and there was one more. But I don't, it's on my desk.
We've got Armstrong Park there. We're going to take the equipment out, might as well put, I don't know, two or three pickleball courts there and still get used. And you call Big Armstrong Pickleball Courts now instead of Big Armstrong Park.
It would do less than Jeff's.
People have to love it.
I think the other one was the one fifteen.
Oh, it was a little tease, I, which I didn't want to leave for.
I don't see that being a good location.
Right now, no. But they're, they are meeting next week, so they'll probably have a recommendation.
Was it that Anderson Road, when you had restrooms? If you saw that. I don't think there's restrooms at Armstrong.
No, there's nothing.
I don't know if restrooms are required for a pickleball court, but that's just.
You play long enough, no matter where you're at, you're going to need restrooms.
Yeah, that might be an issue for the park board to work out.
But I thought Dave's suggestion was a great, being Armstrong Park. Once you take that equipment out, it's just a patch of yard that's not being used for anything.
But that's not one they're interested in.
What's that?
That's not one property they're interested in.
No, but I don't think they've thought of it. Well, you think of parks, that's not the first park you think of in street.
They, yeah, they make, they're advisory, so I'll make a recommendation and then we can take everybody. But I find, I'm, Big Armstrong, nineteen ninety-eight, I think?
Yeah.
Was one that was brought in?
Yeah.
Okay, um. Two comments, November thirteenth and fifteenth, BEST will be holding their workshops, I guess, for the Owens employees at the Sugar Public Library, ten AM and one thirty PM. They'll go over services, what they can help provide. I'm sure they'll have job information on what's available in the area. So they've asked if we could help promote those and try to get people there. They were, from what I understand, told they couldn't go onsite at Owen, so that's why they're holding it offsite. So they're trying to get people there and see what they can do to help provide those services. Tentative date, I believe this is going to be on November eighteenth at six PM at our town hall. Some residents express an interest in starting a neighborhood watch. So I'm not sure where yet, based on how many people would be interested in attending, but that's our tentative date in time for a kickoff for that. Do I have any other?
It's Saturday, four PM.
Oh, yeah.
Benefit for Shop of a Cock at the Knights of Columbus. Don't forget, try to come by and can. This Saturday, the ninth at four PM, Knights of Columbus.
We get a, I guess, motion and second to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Okay. Dave, Connor with the motion, Tim, Gary with the second. Clear color roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reeve?
Aye.
Mary P. Dye?
Aye.